Bring the meeting to order. Town Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners, July 24th, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if we could, we would have a small moment of power if you will.
Thank you.
May I have one more? For the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free republic which stands one nation under God, and in the book of the Constitution of the US.
Need either either a motion to approve the consent agenda, the agenda as it is, or a motion to modify the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I would like to move one motion to this. And it is on page eight, under Commissioner Updates, the PBA Downtown Update. It says that I mentioned to the PBA that we had actually purchased this property at South Bridge Street, but in fact, they're only under contract. So if the minutes could reflect that I revise that the town was under contract to purchase the property.
Are there any additional motion? If not, we need a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we do need a motion to approve, but either modify the consent agenda. So Michael has made his recommendation of correction to the minutes, and so therefore we need a motion to approve the agenda, and therefore the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now move forward to regular meeting agenda, which we will begin with citizens matters. At this moment, we don't have anyone that signed up. Is there anyone that wants to seek and did not find? If so, you can come forward and place your name on this list. And if not, then we'll move forward with Commissioner Updates.
I'll mention the, I attended the EDC meeting, and Jason Sullivan, the county planning director, presented the county's comprehensive plan. It was well received. I'll mention that the PBA Downtown meeting, I was not able to attend, but I did update them through email, and told them about budget, that it had been passed, that the justice property was under contract, or actually has been purchased at this time, and that we should be looking for a parking lot to get spikes. And it has been spiked, so we've got public parking available. And updated them on progress of the rain garden as well. Main Street, I'll mention that the board had a very good meeting. It was a three-hour meeting. Mike Dasher was there, and we crossed paths. He was heading to the planning board meeting, and I was getting there a little late. I can say that the 501(c)(3) status is very close to being in hand, and that the website dedicated exclusively to Main Street program is very close to coming online. And then I'll mention a meeting that isn't a normal part of our repertoire here, but there was an affordable housing meeting that Pamela and I were able to attend with Mr. Brucebeck and Mr. Jones, and also Jim Crawford, Chairman of the County Commissioners. We met with Tyler Mulligan, and it was a very good meeting, two-hour meeting, and still plenty of information that we never left on the table. So it was very encouraging, and I think a wealth of knowledge just down the street for us to jump into.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pioco, are there any additional? To move forward. In reference to Triangle J, we are actually on vacation for the month of July, and we will resume in August. And as Commissioner Pioco indicated, the meeting with Tyler Mulligan was really very, very, very informative, and some information that we hope to share with each of you a little later, but it was very, very important, and there is a very, very good book which he has co-authored that you all should read, and I'm hopefully will have it and be reading.
Mr. Brucebeck, were you planning to acquire those books?
Yes, as soon as we're able to actually pay for it. We have a little trouble charging people right now, I guess.
On the subject of affordable housing, I can help you out for humanity of the United States, and it would be very interesting to learn about how they plan going forward. And I did grab a mini packet today, and I left it on the charger, because I was having a bit of a, it's off the rest of the room, what's coming up in this world. Thank you so much.
If there's nothing else, we'll move forward with all business. Special use permit?
We have a special use permit, SUP-2017-01. Plans have been submitted for an addition to a daycare facility located at 280 NC Highway 902 in the R10 district. The daycare facility was previously permitted in 2007. However, the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance requires that major modifications to the initially approved site plans must be reviewed using the same procedure as is used in the initial plan review. The proposed addition is 864 square feet and will be able to accommodate 20 children and two teachers. A public hearing was held on June 26th, in which a neighboring property owner spoke citing driveway concerns. However, according to the applicant, this matter has been resolved. The planning board reviewed these plans at their meeting on July 5th. These plans were found to be satisfactory, and the board voted unanimously to recommend approval. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate departments, and staff is recommending approval of the request. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I did have one, but you did ask for that. That driveway has been straightened out and all that, not in the way of the neighbors or anything like that.
It's been taken care of.
Good, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Then we'll go to the next.
Okay. Do you want to vote?
I'll move that we approve as recommended by the planning board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
All right. Social use permit, SUP-2017-02. Plans have been submitted for a monopole communication tower along Foxfire Trace near the D Farrell Road intersection. The applicant is proposing the construction of a communication tower 195 feet in height, which in the RA2 zoning district requires a special use permit. A public hearing was held on June 26th. No citizens spoke. The planning board reviewed these plans at their meeting on July 5th. The board expressed concerns over the tower's proximity to neighboring properties. However, the applicant was able to ease their concerns by explaining tower design. The board voted unanimously to recommend approval. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate departments, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed request. Sorry, I finished. I'll get it there eventually. Okay. Do you have any questions?
So the neighbors, I assume, were all notified and were rejected. I'm curious to know what the design is that reassured the planning board that refused. How many of them have complained?
Here, he can explain it better, but essentially what he was saying was, the tower doesn't fall, like, straight over. It's designed to, like, I guess, fold in, fold down on itself, not, it doesn't fall like a pencil would, straight over. And that's, that was one of their concerns, that it was, yeah.
So that was their main concern, anything?
And that was neighbors' concerns or planning board's concerns?
That was the planning board's concerns.
Not just from the neighbors?
No.
Any additional questions from the board?
Make that a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. The zoning text amendment?
Yes, zoning text amendment, ZTA-2017-01. Knott's Funeral Home is requesting that funeral homes be added to the list of uses permitted by right in the C4 zoning district. Currently, the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance lists funeral homes and crematoriums as a singular use type. However, this request is specific to funeral homes and does not include crematoriums. Knott's Funeral Home has been located at 50 Masonic Street in the C4 zoning district since 1994. The funeral home has requested this text amendment so that they may be in compliance with the zoning ordinance and construct a new facility. A public hearing was held on June 26th. No citizens spoke. The planning board reviewed this request at their meeting on July 5th. The board posed the question of whether or not embalming does or would take place at the Pittsburgh location. The applicant has informed us that while they do not do cremations at this location, they are licensed for embalming. The board found this text amendment to be consistent with their future land use plan and voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
My question, we adopt the existing statement, as presented in our package, and I'll also make a motion that we approve the ordinance mandating the zoning, the ordinance mandating the zoning ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and properly expected. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carried. Ben, here we go again. Resonant request from Masonic Street, Orange Development Group.
Yes, Orange Development Group has proposed to rezonate three parcels located along the northern ends of North Masonic Street and North Small Street, from R12M and R10 to R10 and C1. These parcels are approximately 8.7 acres altogether. The larger parcel along North Masonic Street has been zoned R12M since the late 1980s. The two smaller parcels along North Small Street have been zoned R12M since the late 1980s, but were rezoned to R10 in 2012. The future land use plan has designated these parcels for mixed-use town center. The parcels to the north are zoned M1. The parcels to the west are zoned R12 and R12M, while the parcels to the south and to the east are zoned R10 and R12M. Staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan, and that these parcels present suitable locations for high-density residential and neighborhood shopping districts. As the majority of the surrounding parcels are either zoned or used for medium to high-density residential, staff is recommending approval of the proposed request. A public hearing was held on June 26th. No citizens chose to speak. The planning board considered this rezoning at their meeting on July 5th. The board initially posed questions regarding C1 being sandwiched by residential districts, but after some discussion over the future of this area stretching between downtown and Chatham Mills, the board found their request to be consistent with the future land use plan and recommended approval. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
What were some of the conversations from the planning board?
I mean, essentially, they were concerned about commercial being next to residential, but, and we discussed the future land use plan, and the fact that it's designated for mixed-use town center, and that involves residential being close in proximity to commercial, and the fact that this is also not C2, this is C1, which is supposed to be next to residential, and it has listed in the description that it's there to protect the surrounding residential areas.
That's the purpose. So Mayor Perry called me and spoke with me about this particular item, and Commissioner Fugue, I think she told me she'd spoken with you about this too. I wasn't altogether clear on the details of her concerns. She's still recovering, and she was feeling a little bit lightheaded because of her medicines. But this was before the surgery that she called me, and I think before the surgery, she actually sent the email. Her specific question was to wonder why this project is a strict zoning rather than a conditional use zoning with site planning.
I mean, it will, we didn't see the need for it to be conditional use. I believe the applicant has said that he's interested in townhomes, and if townhomes, if he were to submit a site plan for a townhome, that would be a special use, so it would have to go through the public hearing, of course, and the whole process that our other special use permits have come under. So we haven't, we didn't really see the need for him to request anything at this moment in time. He hasn't quite nailed down what he wants to do with the property yet.
One thought that came up in conversation with Mayor, is that this is a fairly, fairly unique neighborhood street, and its proximity to the downtown area, and the fact that we've had some, I don't know if it's change of mark or change of mind about the parallel zone on Hulsprow Street. She thought it would be worth, worthy of us to have a broader conversation about policy, about zoning policy in this neighborhood. And with respect to the applicants, I think she has no interest in delaying this, but rather would like to have this as an opportunity for us as a board to give clarity about a vision for that, that whole stretch of Masonic Street. Now, those are my words, trying to characterize what she was sharing with me. But it does seem to me that, and she used the word fragile, it seems to me we've got a really unique situation with Mill, on top of the hill, being a historic facility. I think we also have some considerations that I feel compelled to pay close attention to as regards the fact that that's, some of our only affordable housing in town is on that straight street. And the character of that street is undoubtedly going to change, but let's hope it changes for the better. It could also change for the worse, and I'm not suggesting that this particular development would do that, but that we might want to very carefully think about that straight zoning rather than conditional use with site planning. Now, that said, Commissioner Fugue, I'd like to ask if you could elicit any recollections from your conversations with her, or any additional thoughts at this point in time?
No, we have to. She did call, and she had posed that question that she sent to everybody in email about what, what was anybody's thoughts on a straight rezoning. And we talked about conditional use rezoning. I mentioned the two other vehicles that are similar to conditional use, and that is conditional zoning, which is another tool in the toolbox, and then there's the mixed-use plan development. Project's not big enough to qualify for a PDD. So those are the three items where you get more clarity as far as the uses that are to be created. And we talked about the fact also that would we have a policy that said, you know, we want certain things to be conditional use, conditional zoning, blah. It sounds to me like there was a conversation between the staff and the applicant, and the guidance was no, wasn't necessarily given what the proposal was. And, you know, I see the benefits of traditional use, conditional zoning, those kinds of things, but I also see that, you know, there's a big difference, a monetary difference, in conditional use and a straight rezoning. And this straight rezoning, and there are times when a straight rezoning is appropriate for that reason. And in this case, they're talking about creating this mix, residential and commercial, in an area that our land use plan calls mixed-use town center. So this is one of those cases where I think it is, it's acceptable to go with straight zoning. And so we did talk about what would be the town's policy, and it's worthy of a conversation to better understand how it is to provide guidance to planning, because they are the first folks who interface with developers, and let them be the first to promote, project the town's thinking and policy on these issues. It is a very sensitive area. The land use plan, as you mentioned, would be modified recently because we had the mixed-use town center all the way out to Hulsprow. We didn't think that was appropriate. In fact, I thought it was an error. I thought we hadn't done that at the beginning, but clearly that goes back. And so we were preserving traditional neighborhood. Sonic, in my thinking about downtown, and PBA, and the Main Street program, I've always seen as a core to Mill, as a connector, not through the traditional neighborhoods, but on that side, because we've got several businesses at the southern intersections. And so, you know, I've thought about this particular project and this request, and I am comfortable with it being these two zones, given the fact that our land use plan said, please have mixed-use.
I know the town has been an area of Hulsprow Main Street program, but it does seem like with a Mill and historic house behind it, that this would be such a unique property or community area to have sort of, for sort of personnel to live in. I mean, to ask someone who's old to order from Main Street program, and also someone that kind of puts a vision.
Yeah, those are, those are helpful insights, Commissioner Fugue. Commissioner Foley, I appreciate your chiming in as well. It does seem like it's an opportunity, and I'm very glad that this unit, Orange Community Development, has a financial opportunity. I am wondering, though, if perhaps the board might be willing for us to continue the conversation, given Mayor Perry would be willing or able to join us in the next two weeks. So a date-specific continuance is what I would suggest, and I propose the motion. Can I get a sense of whether or not folks might be open to that?
I think if there's a newer of this board, that's why I feel about continuing the correct plan, and there's certainly a reason to speed things up, I think that's respectful for the person here.
And I think from what we are, the mayor was indicating, is something that she would like to discuss and actually investigate more, and for us as a board to investigate it more as well, is what I'm hearing.
And we can learn together.
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate that. And I very much value her legal experience in menus law and her consulting experience as well. So, well, with that, I would like to make a motion for a continuance of this conversation on, that would be August 14th, under old business.
Second. Motion been made and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Thank you. We have an affordable housing update from accident with Triangle J Council Building Act. And this was basically, we have requested this, she's been sticking to and presenting information to the Chatham County Housing Committee, and I think it's very, very useful and very informative if everyone could hear what they have been presenting. We have another meeting tomorrow night, but this is, it's very good information, and more so focused at this time on rental, affordable rental housing, but it still is very, very informative and very useful.
Thank you, Commissioner Mulligan.
So, thanks for having me here tonight. I sort of have two presentations that fit together for you tonight. One, the first part is really talking about the definition of affordable housing, and how we talk about it at Triangle J, so that we're all on the same page when we talk about the rest of the presentation. I'm also going to provide some key trends into why this is an issue now, while we're seeing this as a crisis in our communities today versus 10 years or 20 years ago. And then I'll go into specifically the Chatham Housing Committee, and what we've been talking about over the last year, and our preliminary recommendations, strategies for the county overall and for Pittsburgh specifically. We are meeting, our last meeting is tomorrow night, so we will have some more refinement, I'm assuming, of our strategies, but we're getting really close to the final product. So as I mentioned, we'll just do the definition, and then key trends, a few things we've heard. We've been working on affordable housing across the seven counties that Triangle J works in for several years now, and we've heard a lot of different things, so I want to sort of put that out there. And I'll also talk about the role that governments can play. So there are a couple of different things that government could do. I mentioned a few things that other governments in our region are doing with affordable housing financing, and then we'll talk about the strategies specifically. And please feel free to stop me with questions or clarifications as I go, but if you want to wait until the very end, we should have some time for discussion at the end as well. So basically, the definition of affordable housing that we use is that your rent plus your, for your mortgage, plus your utility should be no more than 30% of your gross household income. And that's for families that are lower moderate income families. The idea behind this is that if you're a higher income family, you can spend more than that on your house and have lots of money left over for other expenses. But if you're a moderate or a lower income family, if you spend more than 30% of your income on housing, you have very little left over for transportation, school, expenses for your children, healthy food, healthcare, all of those sorts of things. So this is the definition that HUD, the U.S. Department of Commerce, So this is the definition that HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Development Uses, as well as other agencies. And what is lower moderate income? That is basically, let's see if I can move the slide. Thank you. The, so if you look at the top here, HUD puts out the area median income limit for each region every year. And so where you live really depends, number really depends on where you live. So the left-hand side, you can see the Chatham, Durham, and Orange Counties, the median income for families of four in that area is around $73,000. And the eastern side of our region is $80,000. So where you live, the housing costs can vary a lot, and they try to take that into account. When we talk about affordable housing, we're just talking about 80% of AMI of the area median income or below. And some communities also look at workforce housing, and that's defined as being between 8 and 120% of the AMI. So that just kind of gives an idea of what we're talking about. So in, in Chatham County, we talk about moderate income, we're thinking around $50,000 per year for a household, for a family of four, sort of the rough range that we're working with in this area.
Noting that this particular slide is not in the packet, that would be a great spot.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I apologize, I can definitely provide that. Yep. So the next slide is just some data we've pulled on housing cost burden in households for homeowners and renters. So if you take that 3% threshold and look to see within each census tract, what proportion of people are paying more than the, more than that 30% threshold for housing? So you can see that on the left-hand side of homeowners, in a lot of areas in Chatham County, there are more than one in three households spending more than they should on housing. And the county overall is at 33%, I believe. So that's, that's a big deal. But if you look at the renters on the right, you can even start the picture. There are cost burdened renters at higher rates all across the county, sort of stretching from Bear Creek up through Barrington Village. And the average census, so countywide, is 49% of households in census tracts are spending more than they should on housing. So that's, this data's one of the reasons why the Housing Committee wanted to focus on rental housing for this last year, because that was really a key issue in the county. And there also was a feeling that there had been some focus on homeownership in previous years, and so this year would be more of a focus on rental. Any questions on this? All right, so the next slide is the, one of the other things to think about is transportation, right? Some folks might choose to pay more money for a house that's a little bit closer into their job, or a commercial area, or downtown, and then be able to walk or drive to their home to work. Or you might choose to live farther out and spend less money on your house, but then spend more money driving to and from the things you go to every single day. So one of the metrics that is used for these two costs combined is 45% of your income should be, no more than that should be going towards those two costs combined, housing and transportation. And so there's this great website, it's called the Housing and Transportation Index, and they basically take all the data from census tracts and say, if you were a median, a median income household, what would you spend in a census tract? And so on the left, you can see, basically if the census tract is blue or darker blue, that's above that 45% threshold of housing and transportation costs together. So much of the county is above the 45% threshold for a median income household. But if you look at the 80% of AMI households, so it's basically the same, same type of households, a number of workers, a number of people in the household, but lower income at 80% of AMI, you can see there's a lot more housing and transportation cost burden in Chatham County, and then you can see other parts of our region as well. So that just sort of gives you an idea of what the costs are. So some key trends, why is this an issue now? Why are we hearing about this now? This is a very basic overview, but we found that people who've presented those two in the past find it very helpful to talk about affordable housing and to sort of think about why it's occurring now. So the next slide, one of the things that I think is important to keep in mind in this discussion is that our region's grown very quickly. Chatham County is actually, I think in the last population estimates that I saw, Chatham County was the fastest growing county in our seven counties for Triangle J's region, at about 2.1% per year. So we have this growth all over the region, but, and you know, we, we see this population growth on our roadways, right? We see increased traffic, we see increased congestion. The same thing's happened in our housing market, but it's not nearly as visible. But it's important to think about it in a similar fashion, that we have a lot of folks moving in, it's a great place to live, and our housing market is getting crowded. So the next slide, I pulled some data from the American Community Survey for new households, household growth basically, in this, in the seven counties, and then also the building permits for the same time period. The new households is an average of five, five-year estimates, it's the ATS to five-year estimate. So it's not the best data source ever, but the best we can do for this timeframe. And so you can see that in 2010, which includes the recession period, in 2010, we had a growth of over 23,000 households in Triangle J. And construction was down, right, because the recession was going on, there was a lot of limitations on financing and all those other stuff. So there's only 7,000 units that were built in that same timeframe. Over time, sorry, over time, the, the new units increased, and now that new units are above the new households in our region every year. But despite that, after this five-year timeframe, we're still about 3,720 more new households in the region we have new housing units. So the next slide, you can see that we have a really tight real estate market. This is data from the Triangle MLS Home Supply, so includes existing and new homes. And real estate experts generally say you should have between six and seven months of supply on your MLS to have a healthy housing market, that yellow bar to the equilibrium of a healthy housing market. We were there back in mid-2013. We haven't been there since. In December 2016, our MLS supply is down to 2.4 months of homes that are for sale on the MLS. So it's a really tight housing market, it's a seller's market, which means prices can go up because there's limited supply and a lot of demand. The next slide, this of course is leading to an increase in home values, and this is a really great interactive map you can find on Washington Post website, website, where they look at the increase in home value by zip code since 2004. And so you can see that if it's in a green color, like sort of a yellowish-green, that means it's increased by at least 18%. The yellow is over 40%. So much of Chatham County has seen an increase of at least 18% home value. And I selected the, looked at over the highest, which is Goldston, and it's seen a 60% increase in home value. So if you kind of keep that 18 to 40% number in mind, on the next slide, you can see that incomes have not kept pace with the increase in home values. And this is really where the issue is. This is great data from a report that was done a couple of years ago, looking at equity across the region. And basically what they found is that, looking back to 1979, at the full-time, you know, wage and salary earners, what is the increase that's seen in income over time? So if you're a higher income earner, making $75,000 and above, you've seen income increases of 35% or higher, which are easy to keep pace with the increase in home values. But if you are a lower income earner, that's not the same case, especially for the 20% down below, where you're at about $25,000 a year, you've only seen a 7% increase in your income. And it's really hard to keep pace with an 18 or more percent increase in home value on a 7% increase in income. And that's part of where the issue has become much more a crisis today than it has been in past years. All right, so these are some of the things we've heard. I won't read all of them, but I think some of the important ones to pay attention to are that we've heard from a lot of small towns in our region and some of the counties as well, that their public sector employees cannot afford to live in the jurisdictions that they serve. That's one thing we've heard, time and again. The waiting list for rehab and repair projects in Chatham County is about four years long right now, according to another nonprofit that does that work. There's a lot of demand for it and not enough, not enough people to do the work, not enough funding. And we also have a lot of folks we've heard who have elderly parents or a person wants to move to the region to be closer to their grandkids, and they cannot find a place that they can afford. They usually are running into a year or more long waiting list. So these are the sort of things that we're just hearing as we work in the, in the space in the region. And on the next slide, just a couple of things about why local governments may want to engage in affordable housing work. We hear this question sometimes too, like, why should we be involved? There are a couple of things that, where you guys sit, where you're able to do stuff that other entities may not be able to. So one is that local governments are able to have influence over development policies, pay policies for your employees, anything lever state level resources that other entities can't. You are a very invested in quality of life of your residents, and if people are having to live in one place and work in another, vice versa, there's a lot of cross-functional commuting, which is great congestion and impacts quality of life. Similarly, quality housing has a lot of impacts. They've found studies that show impacts in educational outcomes, health outcomes, sense of community. And so having good quality housing also is a great thing towards good quality of life for your residents. And then lastly, we have seen consistent increases in state federal funding for affordable housing over the last several years. And local governments are increasingly choosing to just put their resources up to help the issue because they realize that the state federal funding sources are not going to provide the same, same funding they have in the past. So some of the things that you can do as local government, these are really sort of four broad approaches that we like to talk about. You can educate the public, local officials, developers, others that benefit of different types of affordable housing. You can facilitate it by providing infrastructure or funding or other things in the right places where you want to see development happen. You can stimulate it through financing, land, grants, to help fill out financing gap of affordable housing projects, and they often generally cannot build it at market rate and make it affordable. There's just, construction costs are too high. There has to be a subsidy, a financing gap to fill, and there's, some governments have figured out how to do that. And also you're able to regulate. You're able to set policies about development size, parking, the quality of the housing that help both produce new housing and then maintain the quality of existing housing that you have in your community. One of the questions on the next slide is something I've heard from both Commissioner Vonnas and Commissioner Baldwin about what are other communities doing? So if we are thinking about affordable housing in Pittsboro, how can we compare what other communities are doing? So this is just looking at housing trust funds. This is one of the few things you can easily compare apples to apples with different communities. And this is basically, a housing trust fund is a fund that community has within their, within their financing, where they use a variety of revenue sources, which include things like property tax set aside, like a penny for housing, payment in lieu if you have developers building and they're paying in lieu for, for affordable housing, you can put that in the fund. We've seen some communities put general fund contributions in every year, they set aside some money every year for it. Others will sell land, for instance, and put the profits of that land sale into the housing trust fund. And then you can use it for a variety of things. You set the criteria, so you can decide who you want to use for homeownership, or rental, or assistance programs for lower income renters or home buyers, or, you know, it's really up to you. So just looking at other communities, Carrboro has about $585,000 in their trust fund, and it's about 3% of their town budget they set into it. I think they're spending about half of that this year on a project with CASA to build several apartments off of Merritt Mill Road. Chapel Hill spends about 4% of their budget, which is 4.4 million. Durham is about 2%, about 9.6 million. They've had a penny for housing for the last couple of years, and they just approved a second penny for housing this year, so now they have two pennies on the property tax rate going towards affordable housing. Orange County has about a million going from the general fund towards housing, and a $5 million bond, which is how they chose to do it this year. That's about 2% of their total county budget. And then Raleigh's a 10%, or, sorry, 10 million and 1% of the city budget. All right, and so on to the Housing Committee. So I know I was here with you last fall, talking about the Housing Committee. Essentially, this is a time-lated task force looking at affordable rental housing throughout the county. We really wanted to have a good set of educational opportunities for officials in the county, so we have representatives from Goldston, Pittsboro, Southern City, and Chatham County, as well as the town managers from each of those jurisdictions, and some other staff planning directors, policy, the policy analysts from Chatham County. So we spent this, we've met about every other month since November and have looked at the key issues and data that we're finding in the region, looked at some opportunities, had presentations from different jurisdictions and different nonprofits that do work in affordable housing. And now we're getting into the home stretch, looking at the strategies for how to address it. So some, some key points for sort of countywide, if you go back one slide, sorry. About 50% of renter households are cost burdened in Chatham County overall. 66% are making less than that 80% of AMI threshold and are cost burdened, so it's spending more than they should on housing, which is about 2,223 renter households, a sort of the number that we're working to close that gap. So on the next slide, these are some specific numbers from Pittsboro, to kind of get a sense of what the renter, some of the things that are here to look at and look at rental strategies. So the median household income in Pittsboro is about $53,000 per year, but the median renter household income is half of that, less than half of that. So if you're looking at rental strategies, it's probably very different from looking at homeownership strategies, and that's important to keep in mind. Another trend is that a third of your population, almost a third of your population is over age 60. And Pittsboro also has the highest proportion of people over age 85 in the county, at 4%. So to me, that means that you probably have folks who probably want to have smaller places to live, lower maintenance, but be able to stay in community in an ancient place as they get older. And so how can you figure out how to do that? 65% of all renter households in Pittsboro have the incomes below that $50,000 per year, and of those, almost 70% are housing cost burdened. And then looking at housing stock, so about 90% of the housing stock in Pittsboro is single-family and mobile homes. And then a little bit of sort of a smattering of the other smaller multifamily types, so duplexes, triplexes, small, 10 to 19 unit multifamily. But one of the important things to think about is what does this mean for options in your housing stock? So one of the things we found comparing household size versus number of bedrooms in a housing unit, there are, of all the households in Pittsboro, one and two-person households make about 75% of all of the households in Pittsboro. But of your housing stock, only 3, 4% of your units are one and two-bedroom units. And obviously, some folks want to have a third bedroom for a guest room or an office or whatever, but it's important to think about, if you're an older, especially if you're an older person in Pittsboro, do you, are you able to find housing that suits your needs as you, as you get older? And right now, there's not that much, that's sort of the lower, smaller units. All right, and then the next slide, so for the recommendations and strategies we're looking at for the Housing Committee, we basically have developed some broader county-led partnership priorities. So these are sort of the bigger things that we see the county leading on and all the jurisdictions contributing to and participating in. And then we also have a priority focus for Pittsboro to address some of the things that I just showed you in the last slide. So looking at the partnership priorities, the very first low-hanging fruit is develop a housing resource website. We found looking at, looking for information, there's just not a lot of, there's not like a one-stop shop for housing information in the county. So we're going to create a page with this information into the county website, and then have links that you guys can use in your websites to forward people to that webpage. There's a tool called Location Policy, which has been used in Raleigh and Asheville, and basically what it means is you can incentivize developers to build housing near resources like grocery stores, transit, schools. And you also can encourage them to do things like have green building in their, in their housing, or formal certain income limits, or things like that. So we're hope to find some language that is amenable to all of the jurisdictions and adopt one policy across the county so that it's predictable. And when developers come in, they say, we know what to expect, no matter where we build in Chatham County. We know that if we're looking at Location Policy, we can use the same, same metrics. Another one is to identify publicly owned land that's suitable for affordable housing and issue it, offer to developers through an RFP process at low or no cost, and that's one way of filling that financing gap for those projects. Orange County, since this right now, I think they have about 10 properties that they're issuing RFPs for development. Establish a housing trust fund. We, in talking with the committee, we've proposed doing intra-jurisdictional housing trust fund, to basically leverage the resources that you all have, so that you have one fund, the county and the towns all put money into it, and then you're able to spend it in your communities on whatever criteria you choose as to spend that money. And then the last one is partner with the community land trust. And then you may have heard from Robert Dowling from the Community Home Trust, Orange County in the past, a land trust is a great model to preserve affordable housing long-term, and they can do both homeownership and also rental properties. And so I think it's just a great partner to have in the community to work with affordable housing. And Robert Dowling has mentioned that he'd be willing to either consider expanding their home trust into Chatham County from Orange County, or helping Chatham County set up their own nonprofit to do that work. So I think there's a couple of options there. All right, and then the last is the priority focus for Pittsboro. Looking at the data and what we heard from staff and commissioners on our committee, really the priority focus is to increase the number and diversity of affordable rental options in Pittsboro. We heard that you need more housing in general, but specific with rental, the sort of number and the diversity of options was a key focus. So short-term strategies, we have a couple of things that are sort of ordinance-related. Those first three are talking about how to facilitate affordable housing development, and those I think will be considered as part of your UDO process. The, the fourth one there is to ensure that Chatham Park development includes an adequate number of affordable units. I know the Addition and Almost Committee has been working on that, so I hope that that is part of the process as well. And then the fifth one there is to preserve legally binding affordable housing. When a project has tax credits in its development, it is, it has a period of affordability that will expire, about 15 years usually. And so as projects reach that end of the affordability period, we have to figure out how can we renew that period and keep this affordable for a longer time period. And the last one is partnering with the Housing Authority in Chatham County to conduct outreach to landlords about Section 8 program. Section 8 program is great because you can take a voucher, you can live anywhere in the county if the landlord takes that voucher. So it really provides options throughout the area, different kinds of housing types. Just want to make sure that if there are vouchers, that we have enough landlords to take those vouchers, and folks can find a place to live if they have a voucher. And then sort of longer-term land trust, the developable land RFP process, as I mentioned before. And the last one is to encourage development, I'm sorry, encourage developers to use a 4% tax credit, which is a tax credit that is non-competitive, so it's much more easy to use in terms of getting it. It also requires more subsidies. So the 9% is what's usually traditionally used in this area, but the 4%, basically there's more money available from the state, but there's less of subsidy per project, and projects have to be about 100 units or more to be able to use it. It's a little bit trickier, but it's another way to access financing for projects, as opposed to just waiting for the roughly one 9% tax credit project you get per county per year. So it's just another, another source to look into. So with that, are there any questions, comments? So with that, are there any questions, comments?
If I could just make a housekeeping comment before you guys get started. The slideshow that you have tonight, when I hit the copy button on the copier tonight, I only copied one side, so. I'll make, before you leave tonight, it should be easy enough, we're giving copies before you go, hard copies before you go on that. Aspen also had included, and we have those, hard copies of those before you tonight, the draft report that we'll be looking at with the rental committee tomorrow, all 80, some pages of it should be in front of you. If you don't want to pour through all of that right away, hit the executive summary, which is also, should be in front of you as well. If you have any other comments or questions?
I'm curious about that 4% tax credit.
So it's complicated and I'm not great at explaining it, but I know we have a couple of experts we work with, with that tax credit. My understanding is essentially, so 9% tax credit is competitive and the 4% is not. And so the state has a lot of money in that pool, some 4% that can be used. But because of the lower subsidy, it has to usually have more units to sort of fill that, you know, the revenue side of it. It also requires volume cap bonds to be used, which are issued by local governments. I don't have a lot more details than that, but we can definitely get that information to you if you'd like a summary of it.
I would love it.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. So Aspen, it's a tremendous presentation. Thank you very much. It's top notch and it's very clear that there is a mismatch between supply and demand. And yet, one of the things that I continue to scratch my head about is that I've heard it stated repeatedly is the fact that houses cannot be built less extensively. Or maybe I'm not phrasing it correctly, but at some point in your presentation, you stated that it's just subsidy is manageable.
Yeah.
And I would like to probe further to understand, figuring myself along the learning curve or trying to challenge the existing paradigm.
Sure.
So I'll just leave it at that and let you start.
I was in the same shoes you were in a couple of years ago. I felt the same way. Come on, you've got to be able to build it, you know, at a lower price and not have to have a subsidy. And everyone that I've talked to, that's just not the case. Construction costs are high, land costs are high, and so you just have to have a subsidy of some sort. And the amount of subsidy varies in the project for sure, but the incomes have not, like I showed, incomes have not been increasing and everything else has been. And so being able to get properties down to a price where housing can afford that property, it just requires a subsidy. There are different ways of doing it. There are different ways of financing or using tax credits or, you know, the land grant kind of thing. But everything that I have worked with, you have to have some sort of subsidy to fill that gap. Essentially, what happens when you build it, the rents that you get for these projects, if it's a rental project, they're just not high enough to cover the construction costs as well as the, you know, investor return that you have to pay out to them.
Okay, so the rents that can be charged based on cost burden renters' ability to pay.
Yeah.
Don't make the projects look.
Yep.
Okay, so that statement is true specifically with regard to rental housing. Is it also the case then that purchase must have subsidy?
In my experience, yes, not as much perhaps. It depends on, so it's all, it all depends, right? It depends on the income of the household that you're trying to serve and it depends on what you're trying to build and where you're building it. Land costs are a huge part of this and some places those are really high and some places they're not as high. But in my experience generally, I mean, everybody that I know who does this work has to be of some sort. Whether Habitat does sweat equity or, you know, Self Help does a lot of this stuff and they have different kinds of ways to fill that gap. And then we have developers use tax credits. There's, yeah, it's, everything that I have worked with has had to have some sort of subsidy.
And so what I've seen with Habitat, in addition to this sort of equity and the philanthropic aspect of the community funding, they are already in a mode of kind of, I think what I would call cottages. They're very small, modest houses and starter homes. And that's kind of what I've been pondering is, and I gather that Chatham Park investors are also looking at cottages or tiny houses or something outside of the conventional wisdom. And I remember from my youth, duplexes and triplexes, and the tiny house movement being very attractive to many people in Chatham County I know, many folks are building their own, some cases illegally, I think. It really makes me wonder what more we could do to push the boundaries of that assumption. And maybe that's blurring the lines between the subset of problems on rental, affordable housing subset on homeownership. Is that something that you could point us to, for a list of resources of folks who are trying to recreate the Mill House?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the great resources that I'll mention now, which I think is in the January 30th for Pittsburgh, is what's called missing Mill Housing. And it's a great webinar on our website, chathamday.org/housing, that had a great webinar about what missing Mill Housing is. Essentially, it's sort of the smaller duplexes and triplexes that, you know, I lived in after college, it was a great place to live. It's in a single-family neighborhood or a commercial area where it's walkable to things. A lot of zoning ordinances don't allow those developments anymore. And so one of the movements in planning is to sort of help facilitate the development of those sort of smaller multifamily in established smaller neighborhoods or commercial areas or places where they sort of have the benefit of being in an established neighborhood. And you can design them ways where they look compatible with everything around them. There's happen to be three or, you know, two or three units that are smaller rather than one single-family house.
Now, how is that different from inclusionary zoning?
So inclusionary zoning is basically a policy that requires developments that are larger, that are over a certain size, to include affordable units in the development. So it depends on where you are, but for instance Chapel Hill, I think if you build over five units in one project, you have to provide, I believe it's 15% of the units have either affordable or payment and lieu for those units. So those really apply to bigger projects. And so that usually applies to bigger projects. And then what I'm talking about is really, it's not mandating, but sort of facilitating the development of. So one thing that I like to think about is mobile home parks, for instance, right? And one of the home parks is that they have really small lots. And you cannot buy or rent a smaller lot anywhere else for a mobile home park. But what's on that lot usually is not great quality or doesn't last very long or doesn't build well, right? So one of the things I think would be really important to think about is how can you facilitate tiny houses, for example, or small cottages on small lots? Sort of a similar field to mobile home park, but with better quality material and sort of a longer-term horizon.
And is work being done on that?
Yeah, not here. I don't know any in North Carolina right now, but there are projects around the country.
Is there such a thing, like to me, it seems like one of the ways to make something affordable, especially for the elderly, is to have houses that have a shared community space, shared kitchen, shared living space. And then from off of that space, you have private bedrooms or private areas. That seems like that would a way to reduce costs for people who are living alone, it's a way to have other people around. And I wonder if that's something that you see very often. That seems to me like that would be a perfect solution for, especially for single mothers or people carrying.
Yeah, I haven't seen that as formally. I mean, there's definitely informal communities that are doing that, where they will have one person rent out, a couple rooms from their house to other elderly, single individuals. But I don't know any that are formally doing that around here.
Can you specifically design that way to have four bedrooms, four different bedrooms and a shared kitchen and living space? So that just seems like that would be a way to make affordable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any additional questions, comments from you? Aspen, thank you so very much.
And I would have to say it is very, very informative and I look forward to the meeting tomorrow, but there are some other aspects that we can look at in reference to affordable rental homes and hopefully the next step will be affordable home purchase.
Yeah, I should mention that, I suppose. So our next step as a committee is to develop a community advisory committee at the county level for affordable housing to work on rental and homeownership across the county. So I think in the next few months, we'll be looking for members for that board, for that committee, so keep an eye out for that. We'd love to have representatives from Pittsburgh on that committee as well. Thank you.
And also, let me say this too, to the board, that really these are, in this packet, there's a specific action plan. We didn't go over each plan tonight, but there are different plans indicated in here in terms of affordable rental housing. So I think that's very good, so if you all have a chance to just review that information and see what's fit those type of action plans.
Well, I feel very fortunate to live in a community where this priority, this kind of work is viewed with respect and with a high priority. Appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you, Commissioner Colley, and I echo that absolutely, every word of it. Thank you. Next, we'll move forward with unified development ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Baldwin and members of the board. Well, tonight we have Roger with Clarion Associates to go over an update on UDO process. So as we remember, late last year, we wrapped up comments that we would send to the consultant Clarion, and those comments were generated by a variety of staff, public commissioners, and other community organizations. And those comments were sent on to Clarion by the end of last year. And Clarion took a couple of months to compile all those comments together. And beginning in February through the spring, Clarion started work on some of the changes that you'll see in the next draft, or hopefully will see in the next draft. Roger and I did meet through this process to go over these changes, these comments, and give direction. Staff gave direction on some of the things that we agreed with consultant, yes, this needs to be changed, we agree with that comment. Or there might be some things that as a community, we need to discuss further, if not in the UDO process, in a different process at another time. It's good to identify what those things are so we know what we'll need to do after the UDO is adopted. So Roger's going to give you an update on where he is today, some changes that have been made, some things to think about. What we're going to do as a staff is take a couple of weeks to work, to continue to work with Clarion to refine the draft that would be hopefully released by the time we meet again on August the 14th. We'll release the draft, we'll put it on the website, staff will start a public process of having informational meetings, having the technical advisory committee meet again to go over these changes that have been made. And as a board and as a planning board, we may want to have other meetings outside of regularly scheduled meetings to further discuss these changes and these things that might need further discussion from as a group. And Roger will identify some of those. Roger prepared a memo. If that memo did not get to you, we will get that memo to you by tomorrow morning. And it will detail out what Roger's going to go over tonight. Apologize for not getting that to you, but it'll be fresh for you and Roger will verbally be able to go over some of the changes and key considerations. So I'll bring Roger up and he'll go through and if there's any questions from staff, myself or any other staff that's here, and Roger will come and take a look.
Oh, good evening, good evening, Roger. I just wanted to offer my thanks also for the work that Trig and Jay's doing on the affordable housing issue. That was a great presentation and really terrific ideas that are in there. I can't help but offer a couple of comments about affordable housing because that's something that I've been working on for a long, long time. The, we've done a lot in Orange County with the Community Home Trust and that really has been just a terrific vehicle for creating some affordable housing options. The things like the, she mentioned the Chapel Hills inclusionary zoning ordinance, which requires, can only be for ownership, can't be for, can require lower-cost rental units. The state won't allow anybody to do that. But some things she was mentioning, the different housing forms like co-op housing, accessory dwelling units, lots of different ways to approach the provision of housing that will help make some affordable units available. I love what she was saying about the intersection between the cost of housing and the cost of transportation and the promotion of some mixed-use developments in neighborhoods that might help bring down transportation costs. There's a housing issue also, so anyway, I just wanted to toss in my thanks and congratulations for Trig and Jay for bringing those ideas. They're terrific. Okay, well, let's talk about the UDO. As Jeff has mentioned, the purpose of UDO originally was to consolidate the, and update your current array of ordinances, zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and some other ordinances. So that's, that was the task. We produced Module 1, Module 2, which were put out to the public. And one of the things I love about Pittsburgh is how many ideas people have. And so we, what we ended up with was, and this was, so we posted Modules 1 and 2 on the website and along with the compilation of 83 pages of comments that people have made, great stuff in there. So one of the things that we've been doing was, as Jeff mentioned, was to look through that carefully and see what kinds of changes could be made and incorporated into this UDO, what, versus what kinds of things need a broader discussion and would take more time. So what I'm going to do tonight is highlight some of the changes that have been made since Modules 1 and 2 to this current draft that we're getting ready to release. We're working with your staff on. And I'll highlight some of the key changes that are in that and then list out the, some of the issues that have come up. Now, just getting back to affordable housing for a moment, as Aspen was talking, I was going back in my mind about the different kinds of comments that are in those 83 pages. A lot of those have to do with the approach of providing affordable housing. So I think that, and you'll hear me say this in a moment, that the, trying to figure out what the affordable housing approach ought to be, I don't think it can be done within the timeframe that we're talking about for the UDO. That's a topic for discussion. But one of the things I think would be really interesting to contribute to the discussion, and it'd be pretty easy to do, would be to pull out of those 83 pages, the ideas that people had about affordable housing, that those can be on the table as you're talking about yourselves with the community about affordable housing. So with that, as the, as my intro, so let's go and talk about the, some key substantive changes. Again, I'm not talking about the changes from your existing zoning to now, we're talking about changes from the Module 1, Module 2 to now. Talking about, we're going to include in there changes to zoning districts. There's been, there have been a lot of comments, a lot of discussion about eliminating the manufactured home zoning district, and you heard it referred to just briefly. More manufactured home parks does not seem to be what Pittsburgh wants. There's lots of ways to approach affordable housing, but the construction and development of additional mobile home, manufactured home parks seems to be something that a lot of people are suggesting that that's not the direction to go in. So one of the things we're considering is just eliminating that zoning district, the existing manufactured home parks would be made as non-conforming uses. But that's, that's an idea that's been actively under discussion. Another thing actively under discussion was the creation of a, of a straight commercial district. So you might remember that in Modules 1 and 2, we had commercial activity lumped into two mixed-use districts, a neighborhood mixed-use and a, and a community mixed-use district. But a number of the comments were suggesting we still need just a flat-out plain commercial district. So that's something we want to put back in. Because of the zoning changes, we'd be, we're adjusting the, all of the use tables for principal uses, accessory uses, temporary uses. The, a lot of comments about trees and about adjusting the. A lot of comments about trees and about adjusting the, good ideas and suggestions about adjusting the metrics and the rules that relate to the tree canopy, specimen trees buffers, both the metrics and the definitions of those, and we're incorporating those. Sign regulations is very, very complicated. Because of the recent court action, you know, of course, about the Supreme Court in the case of the, that said that sign regulations cannot be content-based, you can't distinguish a regulation based on what the message is on the sign. And then there have been a number of additional court cases since then that have commented on that, or redefined it, or narrowed it, or broadened it. It's a huge topic, and it's an ever-changing landscape. What we are suggesting for this UDO is that changes be made to it that bring your sign regulations pretty closely, as closely as can be aligned with those Supreme Court decisions. But the, we know that there's going to be a lot of people who want to talk about that, so just wanted to flag that for you now. We've had a lot of definitions based on, again, a lot of the comments, some of them say, well, what about this? This doesn't exist. You don't have a definition of this, and you should, so a lot more definitions. There's some definitions in your current zoning ordinance that we didn't carry over, and a lot of people didn't like that, so bring them over. So the definitions have expanded the number of terms that are defined. There are adjustments to the, some of the provisions for the neighborhood compatibility regulations that talk about what can and should happen when non-residential development is being proposed next to residential development. And then the, there was also some excellent suggestions that we had in Module, Module One or Two, had a list of green development features that everybody seemed to agree should be incentivized, that if new development included certain numbers of these green, ecologically friendly development features, that then could have a little bit increase in density or something else. And so there's some good suggestions made to us about how to expand that list. Now, the other thing I want to say is that in the many, 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 many comments we got, we got it from a lot of different people, and lots of different kinds of people. So we got, we had comments from people who were very concerned about environmental preservation, some people very concerned about business development and real estate development, some people very concerned about trees, so a lot, it really reflected the Pittsburgh community. I mean, you've got, again, one of the reasons I love this place. Okay, so those are some of the key substantive changes. Let's see, we'll go to the next slide. Some other changes that have come up in the review, changing text to clarify intent and rules at lots of places. I felt pretty good in Modules One and Two about clarity in intent, but obviously I was wrong. And so a lot of people had suggestions about, what does this mean? What does this term mean? What does this phrase mean? What's the purpose of this paragraph? So we went back and we tried to adjust that. Lots of suggestions we received about dimensional requirements, some of them very small, says you're talking, you've got a limitation in here, it's thirty-two feet, and it should be thirty-four, or two feet, and it should be two and a half, and something like that. So obviously, people put a lot of time and effort into looking at the full drafts, and so we tried to incorporate as many of those dimensional changes as possible. Planning board, many suggestions in there about the budget planning board, and there seemed to be a number of items that were encouraging expanding the membership of the planning board by one member to include an additional ETJ member. So we're putting that in and see how that goes, see what you think, and see what the community thinks, but that's, I wanted to flag that for you, that will probably be in the draft. Expanding the timeline to initiate zoning amendments, this is a small thing, but it was something that in your current zoning regulations that limits who can bring forward an idea for amendment to the years of your zoning ordinance. And that seems to be out of character with the culture of Pittsburgh and with best practices of most communities, that it's an open process. If somebody wants to bring forward a proposed amendment to the UDO, that they bring it to you, and anybody can, it's not restricted. And then the-
So Roger, that is identifying the actual regulations and not-
Yes.
...a piece of property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, again, we, in addition to clarifying intent and rules, we did a lot of work to try and clarify the procedures that we have in there. So that's what we're, those are some of the main changes. Now, I want to talk about this next topic that we were just mentioning. A lot of good ideas in here that ought to be on the table. Not necessarily that the changes in the UDO are incorporating the UDO, but just wanted to highlight some of those. We're going to have, we're going to put, this isn't all of them, but these are, we've got about a dozen or so here, that I just wanted to flag for you, the kinds of things we're hearing. And when we have the final draft ready to post on the project website, we are also going to post a couple of other documents, one being a review guide that describes the kinds of changes that were made between Modules One and Two and now. And another one is a list of other ideas that had, that came up out of this process that haven't been incorporated into the UDO, but seem like people want, that there's the talk on. Affordable housing, well, we just had a great presentation about that, and the adjustments to accommodate non-traditional housing forms. Again, we just heard that tonight, co-op housing, accessory dwelling, some other things, and how should that be addressed? A lot of good comments about how, as a community, we can be either incentivizing, encouraging, requiring sustainable energy generation, making that more feasible, more practical, good topic for more discussion. We've had quite a number of comments about the review fees and taxes, and the financial relationship between very large development projects and the town, that some people wanted those fees and taxes to be higher, and some wanted them to be lower, so that's an interesting topic for discussion. Dark night sky protection, we've heard a lot of ideas about that. Encouraging investments in density development downtown through incentives or property acquisition or partnerships, a lot of comments about that. Encouraging more recycling or reduction in the use of reused materials, some good ideas. Again, so what I want to do is, on some of these topics like that one, is include a listing of what some people were suggesting, so that's available for us all to look at. Approaches to portable pools and spas that go beyond what we've got now. Then the, we can go to the last slide here, which is the, just more, some more suggestions. The, heard a lot of additional conservation, additional ideas about conservation areas, what might be done. The one specific topic that seemed to come up several times was, that really hadn't been addressed before, is the somehow promote or encourage high-quality planting soils as development, redevelopment is occurring, that that's an important piece of ongoing sustainability. More discussion about signs, and for example, the, one of the things that we will likely have in the draft is a category, a content-free category called temporary signs. In that, all, a number of things, temporary signs, real estate signs, political signs, and other things, so that's, I anticipate that people are going to want to talk more about signs. Open space requirements, we know, you've got some additional work and study going on about that right now, and so there's going to be likely some changes that you're going to want to see in your open space requirements. One of the things that has been talked about is, as new development is occurring, whether the requirements ought to be for land or for finished, completed facilities, and how in some communities do both, some do one and the other, so that's just something that will need more talk. Fences and walls, I was really surprised to see how many people had something to say about chain link fences. Some people hate them, some people want to say, of course, we need chain link fences, and people want to talk about that. More specifics regarding building design, we've got, as you know from looking at Module One and Two, and what we've described, presented to you additionally, we've got some, we've got more, more metrics and dimensional things in this UDO than you've currently got in zoning subdivision that relates to building design, but there's been a lot of opinion about that, that we should go even further in being specific about building designs. And some people are saying, no, we need to be less specific and a lot more creativity. And then the last one on my list there is the farmers' markets and food trucks, lots of opinion back and forth about that, so that's something we want to talk about. So the, that's where we're going with the revised draft. We're working with the staff to, as Jeff has mentioned, to have a full UDO that's ready to be put on the project's website, and then accordingly presented to the community and public areas and the kind of menus that Jeff has suggested. And also, it's not on the slide, but also will be put it up on the website, some additional information that I've described. So that's where we are today.
Roger, all eighty-three pages of those comments are presently on the website, so everybody can, you'll see them.
Yeah, yeah. What they are, they are not organized now on what's on the website, I know this isn't listed. So the, one of the things I thought would be valuable, as I mentioned, like to pull out things about affordable housing, pull up things about signs, and then people have had to say, and then have those kind of categorized, and then put that back up on the website. Hopefully it'll be shorter than the, you can just-
Oh, tell us about the next round.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think you had mentioned you would kind of pull together all the comments on affordable housing from this round, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I think that'd be extremely valuable.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. Any additional questions you want to add? No?
We've seen your books.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to do that with respect. My floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, pro temp. You might have heard in the news recently that the General Assembly recently approved some changes to the use of alcohol in North Carolina, particularly on Sundays. Previously, we were apparently allowed to purchase alcohol after, only after 12:00 p.m. on Sundays. In the town, interestingly enough, the current ordinance allowed us to purchase after 1:00 p.m., purchase and consume after 1:00 p.m. The change that the General Assembly made is essentially to allow for the sale and consumption of alcohol on licensed premises as early as 10:00 a.m., and that's what's commonly right now referred to as the brunch order. And I received a couple of emails about this actually shortly after it was approved from some local folks, and you guys might have heard from some people as well, and I think maybe even Commissioner Fiocco had mentioned it at a previous meeting at one point, memory serves me right, I don't remember if that was in one of your updates. So Mr. Messick had taken a look at what the league had been recommending as far as a template to use, and I also included in your packet an overview of the Coast Cannons blog, and the Coast Cannons blog about the recent changes in order to, which kind of provide an overview of what's allowable under the new statute. And essentially, what we're proposing is a change to the existing ordinance, which would allow for the sale, the sale and consumption of alcohol on licensed premises beginning at 10:00 a.m., which is current with consistent ordinance. And the draft ordinance that you have in your packet would allow for the repeal, the effective repeal of the existing ordinance that we currently have on the books. As I mentioned and also mentioned in Coast Cannon, for other communities that have jumped on this round, I think Carboro actually was, I don't think the ink was dry on it before they had something done in some other communities and looked at it as well. So this is something that you certainly don't have to take up tonight or ever, however, if you want to, it's teed up for you to do so, and Mr. Messick isn't here tonight, but I think he's comfortable that the language is fairly straightforward, and I guess the diligence we put into this to this point, along with the local support that at least, you know, my ears gathered to this point seem to support the change. So you're certainly welcome to, and empower your way in and provide your input as well. So with that, I'll open up for any comments.
So we think it's a good idea, business establishments as well as just the general public. So I, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm in favor also. This is a good support for our businesses, and as far as if people have moral reasons why they don't want to, it should be an option. Point three, or?
I have a question, Ms. Prue Beck. Is this going to be allowed for our convenience stores to sell malt beer to sell?
Yeah, anywhere you're licensed to sell, you consume a beverage that allows you to sell.
I personally, this is a surprise to me. I'm not too much to credit for it. I feel like what is two more hours. I have a restaurant, I have, we do have that, we won't be serving it on Sunday, but I'd like to see this table for a little more discussion before we vote on something this quick.
I don't have anything against the businesses or anyone drinking Bloody Mary or anything of things such as that, but I'm not in favor of starting before 10:00.
Starting before 10:00 or starting before noon?
It's that before it's allowed to sell before 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. And I'm not-
Beginning at 10:00.
Well, I'm not in favor. I think usually the General Assembly starts at 12:00.
But-
That is what it is to me.
It says one o'clock.
One o'clock.
But I don't-
Yeah, basically, kind of effect of the session is such that it's like, it's almost like imposing, it should be a separation church. It's many different issues about, it should not be a, this kind of a personal church and many bodies or government play to, of course, their time, let me think. No, this is, it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a church. So that's, I'm sorry. It's a, 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 it's
the Meadery or the folks who make the Refined Spirits, the distillery, I guess they're called, over here on Industrial Drive, or Lorax Lane, turns out they're not, but the actions the legislature took with regard to their ability to sell bottled products on site was already granted in the legislature, so there's no delegation of authority to And I thought it was, I thought it was interesting and compelling, and I think what I defer to, to you, Commissioner Farrell and Mayor Sir Prefect Baldwin, I would very much like to maybe do another of those continuations. We'll make a motion for continuation, we'll, we'll think about it some more.
I'm sure down the road when Chatham Park was there, businesses coming up and there's going to be some more change and all like that, maybe that, and they ain't saying that lady, but I'm sure that's something we can look at. I just, it was a surprise to me to be this quick.
Yeah, I think that August fourteenth is a bit jammed already. We're already scheduling hearings and session ends, and maybe the second meeting in August, which it is at this?
Maybe twenty-eighth.
Well, I'll make that motion then. We continue the conversation on the twenty-eighth?
Second.
We've got a motion on the...
Oh, excuse me, you're a...
Yes.
Okay.
So...
No. Okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Is anyone else going to say no? Because mine is aye.
No, I'll say no. I'll oppose the motion.
You never did say vote for nay yet.
Okay. All opposed.
And opposed.
Motion did not carry.
All right. So, I move that we continue the conversation on the twenty-eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All again? The motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Griffin Beck, we move on to, uh, up next.
Yes, thank you, and I'll be brief, we just talked about a few things we have going on. If you want to follow along, we do have, I do have two sided topics here if you're going to play. So, as we've been discussing recently, the new Town Hall project did close back on July seven. Thank you very much to all that was involved with that. We now own a 1.27 acre slice of heaven, of which we will be planning a new Town Hall and parking structure and sharing space with Chatham County. As Commissioner Fiocco mentioned earlier, the parking stripes have been placed on the lot. We did make some room up near the loading and door area because the, we have tenants there currently blossom, the florist, as well as Mr. Justice has some material still stored in there, and we will be allowing them to store that material until the end of the year. So, we have kind of made sure that those areas were not, were not striped, and we've indicated no parking in those areas just to make sure that they have ease of movement in and out of there. We have changed the keys on it as well. Town staff right now is familiarizing itself with the building a little bit, just in the event of, you know, in the event of any issues, because obviously we are a landlord on the structure that you see here, and it's not an old building. So, we will continue to keep an eye on it and look for possible issues, but my, my preference would be to consider demolition in that early 2018 if possible. Just from the standpoint of operationally, I don't think, in my humble professional opinion, I don't, I don't really want to entertain much storage in the building. I don't, I'm not, I mean, I think there's a reason why nobody is really using it, so in the long term, I don't think it's an option for us, so I would like to consider demolition into that thing. We have released the RFQ for space use in building design. Now, the, that process will involve the two, involve the county and the town to help determine what, what each entity will be using in terms of space as far as this departmental operations. And so, at our end, and of course, to design a building on that basis, and so that RFQ's been released, and we're looking to collect that on August eighteenth and then make, hopefully make a recommendation to the board in the next subsequent meeting. Once we've executed the contract, as I said before, then we'll meet with, we'll meet with the managers and with town staff to determine, you know, how our functions are going to dictate how much space initially is necessary in the near and medium term. But then also too, I think, and what I'm not mentioning here, is that the new consultant, I think, should be engaging, engaging both yourselves and the public to determine really long term what we want to do, what we want to do with some of the other elements of the building and the space, because I think, I think as you recall, that some of our, some of our discussions previously, we had, we had some possibilities as far as small public space on the outside of the building. Of course, we're, we're looking at enhancing the parking that we have downtown, but then in the building itself, what do we want, what kind of, what other kinds of public space do we want to have in the building itself? And so, I think that's going to be an important process of what we work on with the architect when we begin those conversations in earnest later this summer. So, really excited about that. I hope you are too. It's going to be a lot of fun, and I think, I think all of us are going to have a big part in this before it's out. Downtown BMP, Mr. Royal has been, been hard at work on this. As you recall, on the corner, there are some rain gardens that, that are currently in installation, and Fred had actually texted me a couple of pictures, which render these photos slightly obsolete in that there's concrete now poured, forming up some of the structures along, along the edges. You can see here in the, there's this, what they call the, what, part of the median, I guess, that they, that the technical term for it.
It's the fifty-seventh stone, the media goes on top of it.
Media goes on top of it, and with plants and so forth. So, we're looking to get that all completed by August four, and I think the downtown business owners have conversations and communication, I think, as far as the consultant and Mr. Royal, I think, have been, they've been working hard to make sure everybody's aware of what's happening, and we try to keep the site as safe as possible. It does kind of make me nervous at times when I see consultants or contractors running out into the median and looking, stretching out plans in the middle of the median here in the, pardon, excuse me, traffic circle, but it's just such a tight space in there to work, so the sooner we can get that done with a good job, the better. One other thing I'd mention is that I've seen some, and I think Fred had even pointed this out when, when he went over the project at the last, maybe the last meeting or the meeting before that, there were a couple of things that went out on social media, including the town posting on Facebook, that included a, sort of, an elevation or artistic rendering of benches, and we're not, this is a reminder, we're not installing benches at this point in time as part of the project. So, as this goes up and people wonder why there aren't any benches there, we're not putting benches out right away. I mean, that's something we...
It's, it's, it's...
Yeah.
It's, it's...
So, we may receive that feedback once everything is, once everything's finished. Now, that's something we can consider doing shortly thereafter, but we're not going to be putting them in at this very point in time. This is the other thing I just want to point out, just to kind of prepare people for.
Neither will be putting in plantings at this point in time. I thought we were contemplating plantings, not the ones that we're selling, but others.
Right.
Yeah, it's basically temporary.
No, just a change, but so it's not a big mass of dense vegetation, it's more of a, of a cleaner look, but native, facultative vegetation, which is not, you know, covered over with plants. There's a maintenance aspect to that, too. So, it'll be in late fall when plants do better, you know, you put them in the ground.
Sanford Porstman Financial Guarantee, we've had some meetings with Chatham, meetings on with Chatham Park, continue on that. We've got another one coming up on August first. We want to finalize some of the remaining language as far as, as far as making sure the town is, is covered on the revenue streams and the amount of money that's owed as far as the, as far as the loan debt and any other capacity charges they're charged is part of the agreement with the, with the town of Sanford and the city of Sanford. So, we have one more meeting on that on August first. Ideally, we'd like to bring it to you on August fourteenth, so be looking forward to that at the next meeting as well, hopefully. Other issues, the EV charging stations, the RFQ on that has been out, it's due on August eighteenth, sent out to, like, receive a list of vendors from Duke Energy, and I think a colleague of, I'll remember to get, get one out to the colleague of Mr. Bonnetts or Commissioner Bonnetts, and make sure she has it as well. So, we'll be looking forward to planning efforts on that. Northside water system improvements, the water main is going in on Russet Run. The, they hit midway through on Russet, they hit a pretty significant patch of rock. The, I think the contractors managed to navigate that, get the rock out of the way. I think the only issue with that is that we make sure that the rock isn't placed back in the hole, and as we speak, I don't believe that's the case. But footings for the water tower, if you continue that on up the hill, you see that the, if you can get back there, and if anybody wants to take a tour of that sometime, let me know, and I love getting back there and projects like that, so let me know, it's kind of fun. But the, the footings for the water tower are installed, they have, they have some material on site, they'll be staging that further up the hill near the footings for the water tower, so good stuff on that to, Chatham Park funded project, it should help improve our water pressure, particularly in that area. August fourteenth meeting, we will get back to, the summer's been kind of crazy and what with, what with our mayor with a couple of surgeries that have kind of moved some objects on the agenda around a little bit. We should get back to the schedule schematic that I've been putting out in previous meetings, but just to give you the heads up, we've got three, we've got three public hearings coming up on August fourteenth. One that we set this evening with the third set of additional elements, but then also the annexation petition for Chatham Park and the Thales Academy public hearing buffer transition. So, those are three of the things that we're looking at. And then tonight, I mean, tonight, I guess, the other, I was going to say that we, we had the additional one with, with the branch ordinance, but it looks like that's going to be on August twenty-eighth. So, we also, then the last thing, one of the last things, two more things I'll mention off script, the FYI section, Mr. Royal put a memo together just providing some really bare bones information on our I and I project. I think, I think maybe on August fourteenth, and Beatty will probably present a little bit more data on that. The gist of it is, in a nutshell, is that the I and I work appears to, at least in a small, small sample size, and some of recent events appears to have knocked down the amount of illegal inflow, I'd say illegal inflow.
Inflow and infiltration.
Inflow and infiltration that's happening. We've, the recent events have kind of, we've experienced much less inflow than we typically would have. So, whether or not that's actually, what, a sixty percent or something, I think over time, I think we need a little bit more data points to take a look at exactly how much inflow that we're preventing, but we are preventing something, and so that's certainly good news because it's much cheaper to not treat stormwater in our water.
I thought you mentioned that, because one of the, I would, I'm interested in more data as to how much more sewer capacity is technically available as a result of eliminating this inflow of stormwater.
So, yeah, there's a larger conversation that we could have around. Yeah, I'm guessing that, that the regulators would want to see some time period of performance at the new level and other engineering justification for a change.
When we look at allocation, we adjust our average daily flow by the month, the thirty day block, so then, as the new actual flows come in, that will probably reduce that number, so it actually increases the available for allocation just a little, back up and inflow goes down.
So, it's, it's kind of an automatic increase?
An automatic increase monthly. I recheck it every month, I readjust it every month.
Very good. Very good. And then the last thing I promised that I, that I'll mention is the, there will be a meeting among the mayors in Chatham to discuss representation in the Tarco Board. You recall previously that we had discussed that currently the Siler City Mayor is, has that vote among that pool of candidates, and so we'll be reconvening those folks, I believe, in the first week of August, if Mayor Perry's available, and they'll be deciding amongst themselves, as apparently has, has been the tradition, that sort of thing. So, so we'll see how, see how that shakes out. With that, I'll, I'll...
Mr. Griffin Beck? Questions for you, Beck? We move forward to Commissioner's concerns. Commissioner Beck?
I just had one thing, Mr. Griffin Beck, I see where you possibly started in Timmo on the first year on the Town Hall making. The private department, we were talking regarding this building, if there's a possibility of some type of training as soon as Mr. Justice gets out and it blossoms, we could do some very good roof training and interior training for a month or so, a few days, any amount. And we do have all the liability insurance to cover anything.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if the, if the community, you know, if, you know, if the community can make use of it in that way safely, I'd want to make sure that whoever, whoever can help make that determination, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, we go through CCC anyway on all of our training, so I'll get Chief Griffin to get you on that then.
Yeah, and then we'll have to probably approach the board to make sure that...
Okay.
I heard that building had asbestos, is that true?
Floor tiles? It would, not, I mean, the era of that, of that construction, we have, we have the, we have the phase one environmental, I don't know if I went into that level of detail on it, but that, that era of building, you know, likely that it adds some material like that. And so, the issue with that is that it has to be, it has to be demolished in a certain way so as to kind of contain the amount of asbestos that can go into the air.
You're scared of your, your practice fire?
I think, I think asbestos is in the mastic, it's in the glue that places tile down, is that not correct?
Usually that's how that would work back.
Yeah, not the tiles, the mastic.
Could be some pipe insulation.
Oh, yeah.
So, more to, we'll have more talk.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fierke?
A couple of things. One, the, there's that the gate latch is not yet backed up, I'm afraid, we're in the pocket parts, so I'll have to force to pay attention to that. I think that's fixed. The fifty solubry property on the east side of the building, between the building and the retaining wall... the retaining wall, there's standing water, and, and I think it's just due to a clogged drain, I think it'd be a much better situation if we can get that drain to function by then. Think it'd be a breeding ground for the seedlings sometimes. If we could find a solution to that, I've looked at, there's a storm drainage box very close by with a pipe that's barely dripping, so, it's coming from that direction, so I don't think there's a drain. And then I was further up Salisbury Street today, and we, we were gifted a piece of property by Jacob's House, and I think we were going to use it, I don't think we identified what we were going to use it, Tarco or?
Yeah, I think so.
So just wondering if we're, often when doing anything, if there's any thoughts or progress on that.
I'm not, it was going to go through the parts and the rock process, I don't know if that even had any contemplated uses for it, so.
Conservation is to contemplate a use.
Well, that's a legitimate use, and I think I was, I was envisioning the property coming back and actually being, coming front to John Salisbury, and it's quite wild, if you will, and I thought, were we doing anything to maintain it, but we don't actually, that's not part of that, of course.
Oh, separate part?
I think so, I looked at the GIS today, said whoever is, owns that property is just enjoying the natural flora.
Oh, that's wonderful. Bill, it's that.
Does it go to me? Okay, so, yes, I, I did receive a number of emails, or most I've received yet, on a subject regarding the Duke Energy substation, I'm curious if other commissioners also can see anything about this. And so my question is, I think that there, I, I've heard a rumor that there was a planning department conversation, and so that's why I sent the email, wondering if Mr. Jones might have thoughts to share as regards his interpretation of the proper process for the decision.
He's not here right now.
Okay. In his absence, Mr. Bruce Beck, did you have any thoughts on that email?
No. What, do you have any specific questions, or?
Yes, it came out of the blue, I know nothing about it, I hear a lot of concerns from constituents and some non constituents, and I'm curious, what is, what, how does this get contemplated by our, our planning department?
Yeah, the best I can probably offer you is that, is that we could follow up with the process for how it would be reviewed, right now, there's no, we don't, to my knowledge, have a plan under review for the substationary. There's very little for me to react on, formally or informally, I just know of the substation generally, where it would be located, that's honestly all the information that I personally have right now. All right. Anybody else feel caught on the mirrors?
I don't have any, I didn't hear anything around, like, until I received the email.
I believe the first meeting for it took place back on July 14th, so I don't think it's an issue of.
It's really fresh.
Whatever.
Well, Mayor Perry shared some thoughts with me about it, and her understanding, I'll, I'll break this up rather than long conversation, is that the landowners that have incited us as concerned, the owners of the historic land, homestead, have no concern about this, that they're not worried about the location of the Duke Energy substation, I think, and so, the question, I think, is how do we go about learning about these things, these kinds of things in the future, and how are they contemplated by our planning department? And is Duke Energy obliged in any way to consult the town, or can they plant a substation wherever they want to? So.
Would you want to add anything? That's definitely. Well, face value, it certainly would seem like a land development project that would require some technical.
Well, I mean, I, I will point out, utilities typically, maybe even offered to have a game with our planning department, or that it came through discussions from Chatham Park, is kind of an offer of goodwill from the utility, oftentimes they don't even go through those steps. So we can request that we receive a site plan, they may be under no obligation provided.
Well, that's, I think, their temptation, if there's any legal authority for them not to, but I don't know that to be true, and I think when we're talking about utilities all the time, we're talking about transmission lines and those kinds of things, but not substation.
The substation, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if you were asking me to wave my magic wand, we, we as a community need to have a thorough view of a facility like this, they may have some legal precedent that they can back, they can fall back and say, no, in fact, we don't. So those types of conversations, I guess, now start, and, you know, we can certainly follow up and provide you with more feedback on it, if we get more information.
Great, thank you, I didn't want to go any deeper than that, I appreciate this conversation, guys.
There's nothing else?
I don't have any Commissioner's concerns, other than I am very, very anxious to see how this downtown BMP looks when it fits, because I mean, it's all torn, I was real surprised that I will be anxious to see how that looks, and I look forward to, to be real.
So, I'm talking about fish, and we have been down the road, and we can, we have one fish in here.
Any additional comment, concern, questions, Bruce Beck? If not, then.
All in favor?